No sound.
I tried to do the little thing in the bottom, the toll pads.
We can hear them, but they can't hear us.
No, there's sound now. Alright, no sound.
Make your phones on.
Very top right.
Just barely. I think it's going, I think it's going through Don's computer, not the owl.
Can you hear us now?
Uh, yeah, talk again. I definitely heard you then.
That works up.
Uh, I think it's going, I still think it's going through Don's computer. I can hear a little bit, but I mean, we can make do certainly if we have to.
Seth, can you hear us?
Yeah, now I can. I can't, I can't see anything right now, but I.
How about now?
He's muted.
You're muted.
Yeah, now, now I can, now I can hear and see.
Oh, brother.
We should be good now.
The only thing to try is rebooting the whole thing.
No, it should, it should be good now.
Well, Steve can't talk either.
I can hear, yeah, I can hear and see now.
Hey, Don, we, we still can't hear on the feed.
Oh, my God.
Speak loud, Brian.
How's that? Alright.
That's better. There, there's quite a bit of feedback on the feed.
Can you hear better now, Steve?
That's better.
So, uh, in continuing that hearing, uh, is, uh, the applicant has, have anything further that they'd like to present?
Oh, we've got a full lease and operating agreement. Bill, if you'd like to copy of that, because there is fully executed lease, operating agreements. You got it. Is there any info for us?
No, is there? Not yet. We're gonna talk about this later in the meeting. Is there anything else from the public?
Could we hear what the engineer had to say or comment on?
So, uh, sure, there were, uh, some conditions that were discussed. Those conditions, uh, included some comments on the hours.
So I do have a couple of questions. Um, so in your application, you talked about there is a daily limit of sales someone can purchase with multiple locations in the area in that monitor through a system? Or it just means from your location, they can only purchase a certain amount?
They would have to show a valid ID and to my understanding, I need to know what they could purchase. I, I haven't read that a hundred percent myself.
Okay. Um, and also you did mention you were talking about opening, um, delivery only in White Plains and in Glens Falls. Are you still doing that or?
No, there's gonna be a delivery only location in White Hall originally until we have the store open here. No need to do that with the store opening here. We can start delivering prior to the opening once we secure a location.
Now, when you met with Glens Falls, um, you did mention that they asked if you were gonna do delivery and you did mention you were open to discussing not having a delivery option. Is that something you're open to discussing with us or you're set on having a delivery option?
No, we're set on having delivery. It's definitely part of the business.
Um, and then for the delivery purposes, um, how far will you deliver? I know there's a couple other delivery only in the area. It looks like they deliver to the entire state. How does that, you know?
We can deliver to the entire state. I'm not interested in heading south to trample on anybody's feet. I'm interested in heading north. There is nothing, no dispensaries north of here. Um, I don't see any of these big investors heading up there. As soon as this, as soon as I can get open and a majority of the license holders get licenses, they will allow me to open a second location. I will move north then with another location myself because everybody else is headed south. We will deliver. I'm mainly gonna deliver from Menand's north.
And then in it, it mentions you can kind of have an option of how you deliver. You can be on foot, you can be on bicycle, you can be in car. Are you looking to have delivery on all of those options? Are you looking to try and just have vehicles?
I believe up here, I'm just gonna do a vehicle. The, the foot traffic and, um, um, public transportation is more geared for New York City, you know?
And then is there a limit how much a delivery person can carry at one time? Like how many orders, how much they can have?
There's a, there's a dollar amount, um, and it's, I believe it's, uh, $20,000 worth of product. We just haven't determined, I haven't determined yet, um, if it is wholesale cost or cost to you. I would imagine it's orders going out the door and there's stipulations. We, um, like I said before, you can't do the ice cream truck thing, you know? You have to have a manifest in your vehicle that where you're headed for deliveries. So it's not like we're just gonna be out on street corners.
Um, also in the diagram that I saw for your plan of this case, it didn't look like kind of how you explained where you'll enter into one room and then go into another room and go into another room. It kind of looked like just one open.
Right. The scenario I gave you was connected either way that their, um, Upstate Canada is designed. We have, um, a full, um, building permit plan that is with John Barrard, Carraro. He's got that and he plans, I just spoke with him, if we get, uh, a special use permit, um, he plans on having everything to Lio by Monday. And, um, he figures Lio will take a few days on that. But, um, it's, it's just gonna be interior walls. There's nothing load bearing or anything. It's just separating and breaking up an area for the customers and where our vault area is, where it's prohibited. It will be broken up like we said, but that was more of an example of exactly how Upstate Canada is.
And then just a quick question for you, George. I, um, you have an incredible website, The New York 420. It looks like you do a lot of work of helping different people try and open. So I guess just a little more clarity on what your role is with this specific shop. Are you just helping them get off the ground? Are you gonna?
We'll still for a long time. Helping them get off the ground and helping organize the entire operation. And I, I plan to be with them long term if it keeps me around. Yeah.
Uh, so there were some questions about the hours, um, and specifically Tim had some questions about the Sunday hours.
Correct. Well, I mean, I know we can't, you know, uh, limit you to any less than 70. So, you know, my suggestion as far as the hours was to do, uh, if you would be amenable, because I think, you know, and we, we could make this a requirement. Uh, but, uh, this would be 70 hours, uh, 10 to eight on Monday through Friday, nine to nine on Saturdays and noon to eight on Sundays.
So really it was, it was the early morning hours on Sunday that were a concern.
Okay. So early morning hours was a concern on Sunday. And what time would you like to see that moved to again? Till noon. I'll, I'll, yes. Do it on Sunday.
Noon to eight on Sundays, nine, nine to nine Saturdays. And, uh, I, my suggestion was 10 to eight on Monday through Friday. You could do 11 or 11 to nine, but anything that works out to seven.
Are suggestions or are you trying to mandate?
I, I, you know, I, I haven't gotten any, you know, absolute from the board yet and we haven't really discussed it in a whole, but I wanted to make sure it was put out to you first. Uh, the 70 hours because, you know, I, I personally think once we get into going to 10, 11, you know, o'clock at night, you know, might be more problematic, you know, for traffic and so on and so forth. And just the early mornings on Sunday. So more or less, you know, to get 70, you know, would be the hours I suggested, although, you know, shifting to nine Monday through Friday wouldn't be a big problem. I just said 10 to eight, but 11 to nine would be just as.
And you guys are within your rights. I mean, you can, the municipality can clearly stake 70 hours. I personally don't have an issue with that. You know, like I said, what are we gonna do? You know, noon on Sundays, if that's the state law, that's fine. During the week you can push till nine, open later, stay open an hour later, open an hour later.
Right. So, so that would be what? Would you want to do till nine on the other, on the other days of the week?
Yeah, till nine o'clock the rest of the week.
Okay, so, so that would work 11 to nine Monday through Friday. Uh, that would be, uh, nine to nine on Saturdays and then 10 to eight on, on Sundays and that would be 70.
Noon to eight.
Noon, did I, did I say that? Noon to eight, sorry, noon to eight, sorry.
I'm, I'm, I'm with it with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not a big ask.
So again, to, to go back to Bill's question, there was some lighting concerns, uh, specifically about the side along Broadway that, that, uh, that were, uh, that were recommended. Lighting plan shall be provided to the Menand Building Department for review prior to installation. At a minimum, the lighting plan should include but not limited to the number, intensity, type and location of those fixtures. Uh, on request of the Village of Menand Police Department, the applicant should provide access to all security camera footage related to any criminal investigation on or near the property. There was no onsite consumption. No onsite consumption shall be permitted. Uh, the applicant, uh, will take all necessary steps required to ensure that this restriction is enforced. Uh, ADA parking, there was required by code, at least one. The Village of Menand, however, suggests three.
Alright.
Uh, customer lines should not interfere with vehicle or pedestrian traffic nor access to any business located, uh, on or off the subject property. Those are the recommendations of, uh, of our village engineer.
That was from the engineer?
Anything further from the public?
One quick question. Is it all cash business?
Um, no. We, um, take debit cards, we'll be taking debit cards at the current time. We do believe when the doors open, credit cards will be allowed also. I, I say that because I've been told through one of the dispensaries that is open, they have just started that in the last week or so. Yes.
Do you also set personal checks besides cash and credit cards and debit cards or no?
Um, I don't believe so. I don't believe personal checks, no.
Alright, thanks. Did you say about lighting you said?
Yes, they're talking about they wanted to make sure we have enough lighting down there to light the area up, but obviously not too much to, um, be attracted.
How many lighting markers will they, will you need?
I have no idea until the engineer looks that all right.
Whatever, whatever, whatever laying marks will be, will be. Thanks for answering my question.
Absolutely.
Just, uh, I have to say as a resident of the village, I do need to again express my concern with how close that facility is to the school. I understand what they presented. I can kind of support the entire bottom of the business. I just think it's way too close to the interest of the school to say that again. And going back to the hours of operation, is delivery allowed anytime? Only when they're open?
I believe they have delivery stopping at nine o'clock for security purposes.
But you can deliver at five in the morning if you want to?
Um, I, I know, I don't believe that any cannabis sales can go on from midnight to seven, something like that, midnight to seven, midnight to eight. And that's to kind of dodge your question. A lot of this information isn't privy to me until we get to the post application. To get to the post application, you're needing your special use permit thing. So, I mean, I'd love to give you every bit of information that I possibly have. I'm an open book. I don't know some of this information you're asking me as of yet because it has not been provided by the cannabis sector.
So I guess to piggyback off that, at this time, are you planning to only have delivery during your normal hours or?
Yeah, 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 during the hours of operation. I've been running through the business students, so, you know, there's only just so much time in the day.
Anything else from the public? Hearing no further comment, we'll close the meeting.
Six forty?
Six twenty. We'll move right into the regular, uh, business meeting. This is our organizational meeting and we will not be having open forum. We will be talking about some older business at the end of the meeting, um, with some updates about some of the things that we've been talking about previously. So anyone who wants to leave, this is, this is your chance. This is a lot of long-winded information. But necessary for the. Since there are only 13 days between the election and today. I decided that instead of appointing everyone and anyone, uh, right now, that what we're gonna do is carry over everyone who has been appointed previously in their capacities and make appointments later in, uh, in due, due turn. So, uh, everyone who is in their position continues in their position. Uh, the only appointments that we will make currently are, uh, I will be reappointing Steve Rakus Esquire as village attorney for the ensuing this, uh, official year. Uh, someone from the bill or from the Rakus Law Firm will act on his behalf in his absence.
Resolution number 240001, at the appointment by Mayor Marsh of Stephen J. Rakus Esquire as village attorney for the ensuing official year being hereby approved and to be since further notice.
Give me a second, I'm sorry, man.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, in a similar manner, uh, because the law does not stop, I am reappointing Bob Basher as Associate Justice, uh, for the next year.
Resolution number 24002, Mayor Marsh reappointed Bob Basher as Associate Village Justice for the ensuing official year. Resolve that the reappointment by Mayor Marsh of Robert Basher as Associate Village Justice for the ensuing official years to be hereby approved.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 240003, uh, whereas there is to be held during the coming official year, New York State Conference of Mayor Annual Meeting and Training School, New York State Conference of Mayor's Ball Training School for Fiscal Officers and Municipal Folks, New York State Government Finance Officers Association Conference, New York Conference of Mayor Public Works Training School, Adirondack Water Works Association Conference, American Water Works Association Conference, State Chapter, New York State Magistrates Association Training School, New York State Municipal Folks Training School and other conferences pertaining to the Chief of Police, Fire Chiefs, Fire Building and Fire Inspections. Whereas it is determined by the Board of Trustees and dependent by certain municipal officials and employees. At one time or, or, or more of these meetings, conferences, school benefits, need, penalty and at the expense thereof shall be a village charge. Not therefore be it resolved that the fire officers and employees are authorized to attend one or more of the above mentioned conferences, schools, Mayor, Trustees, Executive Assistant of Mayor, Village Attorney, Village Club, Village Treasurer, Deputy Club Treasurer, Chief of Police, Foreman of Department of Public Works and Department of Public Goods and Furys as directed, Building and Fire Inspectors and Fire Chiefs, Chief Folks and be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number 240005, I'm sorry, this is.
That's me, yep. Um, the resolution 24005, uh, resolve the Key Bank of, um, of Albany, New York and the Green County Commercial Bank, be and they hereby are designated as the official depositories of the several funds of the Village of Menand's for the ensuing official year. Be, and they hereby are designated as the official depositories of the several funds of the Village of Menance for the ensuing official year. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the General Operating Fund of the Village of Menance. Be deposited in Key Bank of, uh, Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the General Fund Savings of the Village of Menance. Be deposited in Key Bank, N A, of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies be deposited, uh, to be deposited in the fund known as the Water Fund Savings. Of the Village of Menance be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the Sewer Fund Savings of the Village of Menance. Be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the Equipment Savings of the Village of Menance. Be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the Fire Equipment Savings of the Village of Menance. Be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the, um, that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the Park Improvement Funds. Of the Village of Menance be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies deposited in the fund known as the Developer Escrow Account. Of the Village of Menance be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies be deposited in the fund known as the Vehicle Savings of the Village of Menance. Be deposited in the Key, in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it, uh, further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the State Asset Forfeiture Account. Of the Village of Menance be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the Federal Asset. For, forfeiture account of the Village of Menance be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the Police Holding Account. Of the Village of Menance be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the Men's Service Flag Account. Of the Village of Menance be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the Hundredth Anniversary Account. Of the Village of Menance be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies deposited in the fund known as ARPA Account. Of the Village of Menance be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the General Fund Savings C D Account. Of the Village of Menance be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that the, uh, the Green County Commercial Bank as an authorized depository for village funds when needed. And be it further resolved that the monies to be deposited in the fund known as the Payroll, Trust, and Agency Account of the Village of Menance. Be deposited in Key Bank of Albany, New York. And be it further resolved that all checks and or, uh, order of withdrawal from the said deposit. On the, for said funds, with the exception of the payroll, trust, and agency account. Shall be signed by the village treasurer and either the mayor or deputy mayor. Or in the absence of mayor or deputy mayor, by the trustee designee by the mayor. I.
All in favor?
Hi. Do you need me to reread that? I, I wanna make sure everyone got that.
Uh, either you.
Two four zero zero six. Whereas the board may authorize reimbursement of automobile expenses to officers and employees of the village who use a personal automobile while performing their official duties on behalf of the village. Now therefore be it resolved that such reimbursement thereafter may be at the rate set forth by the IRS to such personnel when named. In for such expense unless otherwise negotiated in a collective bargaining agreement and be it further resolved that when properly authorized, a same. E K non-odd by the board.
Hi.
Hi.
Resolution number two four zero 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 seven, resolved at the next annual organization meeting, we have on Monday, July first, to post in the front door at six P M. In the municipal building at two fifty Broadway, Menance, March one two two zero.
Hi.
Resolution number two four zero 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 eight, resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Menance that records and disposition schedule L G S dash one. Issue pursuant to Article fifty seven A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law and continuing legal minimum. Retention periods for the local government records is hereby adopted by. Use for all officers in legally disposing of valueless records listed herein. Further resolved that in accordance with Article fifty seven A. Only those records will be disposed of that are described in Records Retention Disposition Schedule L G S one after they have met the minimum period for. Uh, period described therein, and only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value of merit. Retention beyond establishing legal minimum periods.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Resolution two four zero 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 nine, resolved that the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Menance shall be on the first and third Monday of each month during. Ensuing official year, and in the event that the date of the regular meeting shall be a holiday. Such meeting shall be held on the following day, and such meeting may be adjourned. From time to time in the manner prescribed by law and shall be held at municipal building in said village. At six P M or at such other place or at such other time as may here and, uh, may hereafter be designated by the Board of Trustees.
Give me a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Resolution number two four zero zero one zero, mayor resides over the meeting of the Board of Trustees if the mayor is absent. Deputy mayor resides in the meeting of the Board of Trustees. Both mayor and deputy mayor are absent in the trustees, and the twenty eight trustee resides in the meeting. For the minutes, the meeting of the Board of Trustees. Forum will be three members of the Board of Trustees, every meeting, and the public gathering must be open to the general public. Before. Notice, sort of, public on the board website, time, meeting, leader, second, proceeding, lobbies, and main street forum, and very far, and with seven days' time from meeting. Beside after must open the public hearing, the person must read the notice of public hearing. Public must be allowed to comment on the topics of the public hearing. As deciding after must play the public hearing, both of them will be taken in the public meeting. Special meetings, special meeting with the Board of Trustees. Are always board members other than level meetings. Special meeting may be called by the mayor or any trustee if unnoticed, so the entire board. Notice may be given to board members by telephone, in person, email, or in writing, and with seventy hours in advance unless notice exists. Notice the public on board websites, proceeding with lobbies, and main street forum, and standing with others. Headshots and special meetings, the public may attend, if not honored. Executive session is not open to general public, dealer contact must be denied and not to meet the public. To attend, listen, and join, and participate in the meeting. Notice of the meeting agenda will be available on the board website and posting lobbies of the main street forum, and very far, public comments. Public may only speak during the public comment period, period must be recognized by the deciding officers. Figures must limit to the next few minutes, auto mark must be addressed to board as a body, not be included in the.
Second. Alright.
Hi.
Resolution two four zero zero one, what? Different policy developed in the eighties. Every purchase was made, must be initially reviewed to determine whether it is a purchase contract or public works contract, once the determination is made. Good faith offer will be made to determine whether it is no or can reasonably be expected of. Either the amount to be spent on the item of support services not subject to competitive bidding, take aid to account past purchases, and competitive amounts to start in the year. The following items are not subject to competitive bidding, pursuant to search and find three of the general municipal law. Purchase contracts under twenty thousand dollars, public work contract under thirty five thousand dollars, emergency purchases, certain municipal hospital purchases. Goods purchased from agencies to the blind or severely disadvantaged, goods purchased from. Correctional institutions, purchases understanding on the complex and certain costs and supplemental charges from another government. The decision that purchase is not subject to competitive bidding will be documented in writing and individual means of purpose, this certification may. Of the help from vendors, and not upon the purchaser indicating how the decision was adopted. Not in the contract indicating the source which makes the item or services sold. And then upon the purchaser detailing the circumstance which holds an emergency purchase or other written notification that is required. Goods, services will be secured by use of written requests or proposals, written quotations, written quotations, or other methods that assures the goods that they purchase at the lowest price. And not favors the null or void date except in the following circumstances. Purchase contracts under twenty thousand dollars, including contracts over thirty five thousand dollars. Goods purchased from agencies with a fine procedure, payment cap, or short of section one seventy five B of the state climate. Goods purchased from correction institutions concerned, section one eighty six of the state. Of the correction. Purchases under state records pursuant to section one oh four, providing this public purchases under company contract pursuant to section one oh three three of the general municipal law. Or purchases pursuant to subsequent expenses. Including that the purchase needs when required, and obviously a warrant or a certificate. So, told across manners of the special department, according to one course three, according to the application statute limit. Three guiding lines of nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety nine, three written applications or written requests to propose us. Because the number of the report I got for first, five thousand, five thousand, three thousand two, the supplement is three thousand of the two thousand, two hundred and fifty applications for proposals. Five thousand one to thirty-five thousand, and then the three written applications for the process of proposals. A bit made efforts have been made to obtain required files or quotations. If the purchaser has obtained the required number of conclusions or quotations, the purchase will be taken with intent to obtain a proposal. And no shop, and no bad shop will bear the intent to be a part of the. Complaints are declared in any action to include information with these requirements. That contention and explanation are required whenever a contract is delivered into property. To be prepared by the rest responsible. This notification will include exceptions, failure, or two savings, and a whole lot of other circumstances. Determination of the act as not reasonable, subject to by fixer, and may not be challenged over any circumstances. Pursuant to the general municipal law, section one oh four, into act, the particular person may concern services, like for example, the maintenance for which a sole discretion of the upper line of the solicitation of alternative proposals or probation will not be in the best interest of this company. In following circumstances, may not be of death interest if relatively necessary solicitations for document the basis for not accepting the lawsuit. Commercial services or services requiring special or technical skills, training, expertise, individual or company must be chosen based on compatibility, rather than respectability, skill, expertise, and certain industrial integrity and quality. These qualifications are not necessary for an individual or company to apply to the source to make certain services are such that they do not rather than learn themselves to have a different procedure. In addition, while our services states since this part of the board test, we should take into consideration the power of any services subject to state licensing or special requirements. Be aware, substantial formal education and training is necessary if you are pre-requisite to the performance of the services, and see how they can assist you in hiring personnel, personal relationship between individual and the rest of us. Commercial or technical services shall be limited to the following: services of attorney, services of decision, technical services of the junior age, prepare plans, maps, and estimates, security insurance brokers, aid or services of insurance brokers, services of certified public accountant, investment banking services, quick and services involving the sense of writing, editing, and effort, managed administ, fully owned, quality, and computer software, regular services for most of those programs, services of multiple substantial modification, processing of free package shopping. Judges, which says the source, section one oh three, four, the general municipal law to be the nature of this section, these words and services must be presented clearly and objectively for purchasing alternative proposals, first to light up safety, all clear of this. This section six does not include alternative proposals if tight limits. Purchases of surplus and something that's from any source of alternative proposals are required, but it is included when purchasing surplus, as I could put, actions of the specific advertised sources for the best places that you may have. It is also difficult to try to check all these things that, and a low price and a place in those. If you start somewhere at a thousand dollars, you find that the continues to be first purchase of the cost, and maybe more costly than items itself, but therefore not be in the best interest of the street there. In addition, it is not likely that such minimums contracts can be based on various. They judge if this policy and budget are created, not to judge each other, or to meet the basis for any experience. The village were cleared out, tested by residents and pursued to DML, the local government for reasons of efficiency, state of funding, the price. To me, for sanitization and adoption of residents, in particular, a type of crime that have two different supplies, and not necessarily be awarded to the best response[279.12][279.12][S01, better, and this would be viewed better.
Hi.
Hi. All right. Resolution number two four zero zero one two. A resolution authorizing payment in advance of audit for property or for public utility services, including electric, gas, water, sewer, and telephone services, postage, freight, express charges, and insurance as authorized by Village Law, section five dash five two four. Such claims shall be presented for audit at the next regular meeting, seconded by a trustee to be named in a second. A resolution authorizing the treasurer to approve and pay the claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges prior to regular meeting, they are presented for payment.
Second.
All of the favor.
Hi. All right, resolution two four zero zero one three. I make a motion to approve the Menands Fire Department to use the fire apparatus for the following events, including Santa Claus detail in the village, Little League Parade, the Halloween Parade, the Memorial Day Parades, funeral details with board approval, training classes, and the St. Patrick's Day Parade.
All of the favor.
Hi.
One of the responsibilities of the mayor is to assign liaison assignments. So, I have done the following. Trustee Lane will be building department code enforcement and MS Ford. Trustee Harris will be historian, youth, and parks beautification. I will be keeping the police department and DPW. Trustee Calgritis will be the fire department and fire company, and trustee Harbor will be the court and seers. Also, eventually, I will name someone to be part of the economic development team, but not at this present time. Samantha Hall will continue part-time youth director. Kelly Grimaldi will be the part-time gardener. Nick, John Toppin.
Yes. Resolution number two four zero zero.
Actually, let me, let me just explain. One of Meg's treasures is working on community events around the village. So, what I have asked her to do is keep doing some of those events, go to the village and work with me on some of those events. So, so we have created a, basically a coordinator position, similar to how the seniors have a coordinator for specifically community events.
Okay, so resolution number two four zero zero one four. I approve the appointment of Meg Grenier as community events coordinator at a salary of two thousand dollars per year, seconded by trustee.
Give a second.
Harris. Second.
Hi.
Hi.
The rate is scheduled to be on August twenty-first. There isn't something for that. Other than data, it says that it is twenty-second. Let's see, we need a motion to accept previous board meeting minutes from the twenty-sixth.
I will make a motion.
I'll second that.
All of the favor.
Hi.
Court number three, student general, seventy-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Order, three thousand, two hundred and seven dollars, twenty-eighteen. Sewer, two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, totaling seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. April number three, hundred and twenty thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-three, eighty-four.
So moved.
Second. Hi.
Hi.
I'd love to further, as, as we have a group in the hour, I don't think it's necessary for me to mandate, you know, is that reasonable to you? Okay, thank you.
I have a motion.
I have a motion.
I was second.
Hi.
Hi.
I also need a motion to.
I also need a motion to authorize mine to sign the secret and Albany County. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It's just, I think the secret sometimes will create the secret.
All ready. He said that was a resolution. Resolution number, uh, man, for issuing secret, that, that, and especially the permit site planner, applicant, and eldest, and Elvisville LLC, doing this, Northern Lights New York, that is the law way, man, near state business, on a five point one three dash two dash ten, letting applicant, and Elvisville LLC, doing this, like New York, both to operate in New York, licensed cannabis dispensary, he would be visiting regional units, base gate, and it's the part of that located, now, in the land, person, five point one three dash two dash ten, both project, and wherever applicant, who is a specialty use permit application, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, and supplement, supplemental information on June third, twenty twenty-three, and both persons, seven point two acres in size, and Omael is willing, for, and whereas, both board, any applicant, complete, on June fifth, twenty twenty-three, and scheduled to public carry, whereas on June fifth, twenty twenty-three, Long Island County, where, found, and both project, not, in a significant county-wide or, and, 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 whereas, the vote board opened a public carry on June forty-sixth, and continued the public carry until a formal hearing on July third, and whereas, the vote board, vote board has been part one and two, on short environmental, and, and, I prefer secret review, and whereas, vote board has sole decision making authority for both projects, and therefore, questions of immediate receipt, for, for the purposes of secret review, and whereas, vote board determine that those significant adverse environmental effects are anticipated results on both projects, and issues a negative declaration, and whereas, vote board, to use the application, supplemental information, run against the departments of manual, and site planner view, and article eleven, special use permit review, and, and the applicant, application needs to require, and, 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 then, thus, for, for the conditions, now, therefore, be it resolved, and then, vote board hereby issue site plan and special use permit, special use permit approval, and, 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 and conditions. Both projects shall be carried out at a court with approval, and as opposed to the application of the supplemental application materials received on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, and June fifth, twenty twenty-three, unless, unless, this, absolutely. Any deviation of the project, they require an amended site plan or special use permit approval. Two, big, install area security lighting, one, buildings, front, roadway facing statue, air facing, roads land sign, all fixtures must be cut off and angled downward towards light, still, and, and, or, and adjacent problems, and shall permit the pilot ability and zoning, section one sixteen nine dash four eight, outdoor lighting standard, and light, a lighting plan shall be provided through, on main, on, on, prior to installation. At a minimum, the lighting plan shall include, but not be related to the type, number, density, and location of fixtures. Three, security camera access, all request of, man, please to probably, uh, shall provide access to all security cameras, put it related to any criminal and defecation on a mere property. Four, on, no outside consumption, no outside consumption, helping the applicant, will take the necessary steps required to ensure that this restriction is enforced. Five, ADA parking, the minimum, three ADA accessible parking spaces will be required according to the near state planning plan. Six, customer line, customer line shall not contribute with legal work, and that's being for, or exist, need, this will be a, something, copy, copy of the final certificate of license here from, and this may, to help me provide for the, for, 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 for.
Second.
Wait, wait, Seth. Just, that, you authorized the, the mayor to sign the.
Not, the mayor shall be authorized to sign the secret notice.
Now I second it.
Do you hear me now, Seth?
And now I can.
I've been working with Dorby County, and we've been awarded a grant along with Dorby County, that we will, it's through the New York State Archives, and it's for electronic record keeping. The record keeping was approved, the grant will start with converting vital records, payroll, and past payroll, or past board minutes, after that, our goal is to convert everything to electronically, so it will be available electronically, rather than having it out for the record. The only ones that will not be affected by this is the court, because court is administered by the, um, quarter.
New York court system.
Yeah, New York State Court System. So, we, we, we were awarded, and we start doing that fairly soon, so we, with the grant, we actually get the paperwork, we're notified, like, once we get the funds and stuff.
Three Kingston. Uh, one of our residents was awarded a community development block grant at three Kingston, so that was.
Was that from the whole, the whole program, or?
Yeah, residential program. All right, so, now we'll talk about, well, specifically, any old business that we have, and wanted to give an update about the moratorium for, for dispensing of, specifically of methadone, and we've done a little research on that. Steve, are you available?
Yes, yeah, I'm here.
Can you kind of update us on, on moratorium developments?
Yeah, we, we had a chance, we spoke with, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We had a chance to speak with Ecode, they're the ones who assist the village in putting its, its code on the, on the internet. We've asked them to, to assist us along with NICOM in terms of looking at not only what various municipalities have done, not only in New York State, but also in other states in the context of, in the, in the, in the context of methadone, and restricting and prohibiting methadone dispensaries from, from establishing or citing in various municipalities. What we found is basically in New York, there is, there is no, there are no municipalities that prohibit methadone clinics from citing within their municipalities. In various states, there are restrictions that are placed on methadone clinics, and it's very similar to what we just heard about cannabis dispensaries, and it's establishing number of feet that they can be located or set up in relation to houses of worship, churches, and schools. That is, that, that's the, the state of the law right now. There was another interesting article, which I, I shared with the mayor la, that I shared with the mayor last week, and Paul Tonko had put through some legislation. Apparently, there is, I, I believe it's called, it, it, it's called an X, and the X is a certification which allows a, a physician or provider to, to provide methadone to an individual. And apparently, in order to get that certification, it's been in the past very restrictive. Congress has passed a law which opens up the ability, no longer requires a facility or a doctor or even a pharmacy to have this X certification. There is now a, Congress has passed a law which permits licensed doctors and, and pharmacies to now dispense things like methadone or Suboxone, or there was another, but, but drugs that are very similar in nature to that.
So, Steve, where does this, where does this leave us in, in the creation of, or exploration of, of the moratorium?
In terms of a moratorium, if, if the village, if the board was interested in doing it, I, I, I don't see, especially with the passage of the latest piece of legislation through the House of Representatives, I think it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to prohibit the establishment of a methadone clinic in, in the village of Menands. I think the only thing that the village could do is study issues related to, you know, where, where they cite themselves in the context of, in, in relation to residential districts, in relation to churches, schools, and houses of worship. And I'm, I'm not sure a moratorium would be necessary, it seems to me similar to what the Office of Cannabis Management has done, is they've established, they, they've established, you know, five hundred feet or seven hundred feet from property line to property line, or door to door, whatever, whatever that metric happens to be, and the board could consider establishing by local law, obviously after a public hearing, those types of, those types of metrics. Not sure a moratorium would be appropriate for, for that, or, or necessary.
So, if I'm hearing you correct, Steve, we could put into local law, for example, it can be within five hundred feet of a residence.
As an example.
That, as an, exactly, exactly. And then the next question would be, and, you know, and this is a, this is a legal question, and of course, there are no legal questions that can be answered in a black and white fashion, is with respect to fusion recovery, in the context of whether or not they're contemplating, and I don't know, I haven't seen their application, whether or not they're contemplating or requesting certi, certification for a methadone clinic, but if so, the question becomes whether or not if the village were to pass that at this point in time, would it be considered a quote unquote taking as it relates to fusion recovery, but not other facilities?
So, would, would a, would restrictions on, similar to the cannabis, five hundred feet, two hundred and fifty feet, or whatever, would that, would that apply in their case since they are already cited?
No, it would not, because it would be, it would be considered a, under, under the law, it would be considered a taking.
And that's only if they've already applied to be a methadone, or if they have not applied yet, we could still stop it?
That's why I want, and, and Tim, I'm going to turn to you, because I know you requested a copy of the application, have you received it yet?
I have not.
Yeah, that's why I would like to take a look at the application to see if it can be interpreted as also requesting the ability to, to dispense methadone. I'd be in a better position to answer that question after I looked at the application.
I just ask a question about, Steve, you were talking about the X waiver, correct?
Yes.
Is that what's been, so that buyers, then, the certification to, 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 to work?
I'm, I'm having difficulty hearing, so if somebody could repeat what the question is.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, that's better, thank you.
X waiver was put into place when buprenorphine was brought into play for substance abuse treatment programs. Physicians had to attend an eight-hour course and pass, I don't know, a, a, basically a quiz saying that they understood the concept of utilizing this medication. Medication was used for probably a decade overseas before the United States decided to let it be brought into, to play here. The only scenario that they did was a, they did something, I'm blanking on the name of it, for ER physicians to be able to utilize the medication without the X waiver. They did recently take away the requirement to have an X waiver to prescribe and administer buprenorphine, as they want to increase the ability for general physicians to be able to treat the patients that are in their clinic, so that they didn't have to go seek out another clinic on top of their regular medical clinic. Most physicians still with that lifted, do not want to take care of these patients in their, in their medical practices, but the X waiver has nothing to do with methadone. To be a methadone provider, you have to apply to be an OTP in the state of New York. The last thing I heard from reading from the letter, that they have not applied for OTP status, my thought is continuing the moratorium, or at least passing something to it, to allow you time to explore it, while they haven't applied for that, is what you should do for the residents of the village, as they have asked for some due diligence on this. We've already seen that Oasis doesn't want to do any of their own due diligence, no matter how much we've done for ourselves, but yes, the X waiver has nothing to do with methadone. I, and, you know, you, you said that no other municipality has passed that, I think that we should stand up and be the first. It's time to show people that we have the cojones to stand up for our residents.
Steve, I have a question. You were saying that a moratorium wouldn't be possible, but in the past, the village just enacted a moratorium on used car lots. So, if you can pass moratorium on used car lots, why not an OTP?
The purpose behind, I, I didn't say it isn't possible. The, the, the board is looking for a, a recommendation which they, they can accept or they, they can reject. I, I just simply make recommendations based on what, based on my reading of the law. I'm not saying a moratorium is not possible. What I am saying is, is that if the village is interested in establishing these, these zones, or these metrics, where a, a, a clinic that dispenses methadone, or what you, what you, what's referred to as an OTP, if they want to establish metrics, similar to what the, what OCM has done with cannabis dispensaries, they should do that in a local law as opposed to a, a moratorium. The whole idea behind a moratorium is to study the issue and to make a determination. Back when the used car lot issue was addressed, and moratorium was set by the board, there was, at that point in time, the board had enlisted, and I forget what, what, what engineering firm it was, but they had enlisted a firm to conduct a, a study to establish a plan for the Broadway Corridor, and the concern was, is that during the pendency of that study, there was a, a possibility, there were applications for used car lots to be cited along the Broadway Corridor, which they weren't sure they wanted, but they wanted to get the recommendation from their consultants before they decided one way or the other. That was the purpose of the moratorium there. Whether or not a study is required here, I'm not convinced it is. If in fact, it's, it's the board's position that they want to restrict the citing of OTBs, or OTPs, or, or clinics which can dispense methadone, then they, they should look no further than to what OCM has done with cannabis dispensaries, and, and. should look no further than to what OCM has done with cannabis dispensaries and and use that same framework, which would not be very difficult. Because remember, uh the the purpose behind a moratorium is eventually to pass a local law. My suggestion is is that if the board is interested in doing so, that it should consider passing a local law at, you know, following obviously the process that's required, but but to to pass a local law addressing the citing of quote unquote methadone clinics in the uh the Village of Manans.
So just clarifying, Steve, you said that we could put in a local law that we would do, you know, the distance to A, B, or C. And you're saying that we should study those issues, but then you're saying we shouldn't do a moratorium because it doesn't need to be studied?
Um no, I'm not, I I I'm not sure it needs to be studied, that's eventually up to the board. Um at the end of the day, I I don't think, and again, using the framework set up by uh by OCM for cannabis dispensaries, uh you could, you could basically adopt their language and their metrics in terms of citing where methadone clinics would or would not be permitted within the village. Do we need, I mean, do we need, do we need a one-year moratorium to uh determine whether five hundred feet or seven hundred feet is the appropriate measurement? I don't know.
I mean, it would stop them from submitting an application to being an OTP on Wednesday and being grandfathered into something that we haven't already put into law.
So.
The more, no, no, uh remember, you don't establish, and we talked about this at the last meeting and the meeting before that, the moratorium is not a, it it's established by a local law after a public hearing. I'm suggesting that you could circumvent that process by passing a local law after a public hearing.
Include in those, in that local law, uh restrictions similar to cannabis or to liquor stores, et cetera, so that at least there's some basis for the distance?
Yep, exactly. And that that, you know, those distances, if you find out all of a sudden five hundred or seven hundred or a thousand feet, whatever the case may be, is insufficient, that local law can always be amended. I'm just saying, I don't, I'm not, I don't know, and the the board is in a better position to know this, whether or not you need to study what those distances would be. I think we're, I I think there's probably universal agreement about where you don't want it next to, whether it be schools, houses of worship, churches, or residences.
So with Steve, without without there being examples of 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 others out there, how do how do we determine what the appropriate distances are?
Thousand feet from residence, two thousand feet from school and churches. If it's, anything's gonna be too close.
But but the concern there is then you're basically banning it, and would a ban survive a constitutional test?
Okay.
As well as, I think you'd you'd run the risk of being sued on the basis that's arbitrary and capricious. I mean, what's, why, why two thousand, why not twenty-five hundred? Um so I think uh to me, that's that's a concern that I have for the village.
One of the, one of the uh laws that we looked at that had been passed in one of the states was a um, it was a complete prohibition of methadone clinics within that municipality. That got challenged and it got thrown out. I mean, it was, it, I again, to to Seth's point, it was considered arbitrary and capricious. There was another one that uh set the uh the distance as seventy-five hundred feet from A, B, C, and D. That got tossed by the courts as well. The we we need to have a reasonable, a reasonable metric and not some metric that would automatically prohibit them from from citing anywhere within the village.
So it sounds like to me we have, the only way to do this is to do a moratorium so we can look into studies to show what the distance needs to be and why there's backing to it. We can't just go off of numbers.
Well, that that's entirely up to the board.
And I just want to mention, the liquor stores and proximity businesses, the uh cannabis stores and proximity to businesses and schools, none of those facilities offered armed guard escort s- escorts from a bus stop to the front door of their facility. None of those facilities have armed guards inside the facility because of what can happen in those facilities. I urge you guys to do something that's more reasonable than the, I believe, uh five hundred feet for the cannabis store. I believe a thousand feet is reasonable, it's not extraneous. And I think two thousand feet, because a lot of the the laws are just doubled around schools and around uh places of worship, the problem, and let me just say again, they measure from the front door of the school, which is already seven hundred eighty-two feet from the road, right? So a thousand feet from the school is in that same plaza that we're putting a marijuana store in. I urge you to consider something further away.
But on the other hand, the uh that may very well be, but on the other hand, nobody's taking anything out of this clinic. Uh from uh what we've been told, everything is being handled within the clinic, uh whereas with the cannabis dispensary and the uh liquor store, um nothing's actually being consumed on premises, it's being uh taken off premises for consumption.
One question on that is that they're not open on Sundays. Um I've worked in this field for twenty-five years. Methadone programs are daily dosing programs. Programs that don't have operating hours on a certain day rely on take-home doses. So they give somebody a dose to take on the day that they're not open. So if they're not open seven days a week, people will be leaving there with it.
Brian, didn't we, um, didn't they offer to be open seven days a week to um to handle that issue, address that issue?
My understanding was they were willing to do whatever it took, but to confirm that, uh, we'd have to go back to them and 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 clarify that point.
I maybe too simple logic, but if your engineer can provide you with an aerial scaled map and you can measure it to the.
That was gonna be my suggestion, is is if 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 we can look at uh where it's, where it's cited now and where it could potentially be cited in a similar fashion to what we did with the cannabis dispensary when we were looking at uh, you know, basically the balloon map, you know, with where it is allowed and where the five hundred foot barrier for cannabis.
I'm talking about a fifty scale only, so measure to the nearest foot. And if you look at Lewis Avenue, those houses back up, even so, they back up on Hill West Street. Is it two hundred fifty feet? Five hundred feet. The fact is, that matters too. You know, it's it's simple enough to do.
That's my concern.
It's just like a start.
We're running out of time, because they could go on Wednesday and file to be an OTP, and then they would be excluded from everything that we put in the law after.
So Steve.
Have a public hearing first.
So Steve, why don't, why don't, I mean, let me just throw this out there, what if, what if we were to schedule a public hearing to issue a moratorium for the purposes of 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 uh studying a local law and and the distances required uh to prohibit methadone within those, within those difference, distances?
If you were to set the public here, uh tonight, schedule the public hearing for the next uh uh for the next board meeting? Is that what you're asking? I've lost the sound again.
Same here, I can hear.
You don't need um a public hearing for a moratorium. The council was very specific about that. The council said you need a public hearing for a local law.
Which is the most. No, 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 no. Uh listen, you need a public hearing for a local law. For a moratorium, you need a local law, so therefore you need a public hearing. It's a local law.
So what was done on June fifth?
A resolution to 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 feed on this.
Okay, so it's a month later and we're still.
It wasn't a month ago, it was a couple weeks ago.
Today's July third, excuse me, twenty-eight days ago.
That, that was a resolution to proceed on it, and there was no, you know, and that's that I, you know, and I I didn't sit here thinking as we did that, that was what we passed moratorium. That wasn't anybody here's understanding, that was an understanding that we were gonna, we were gonna proceed on that.
Now, what's the plan now?
So are we gonna introduce?
Brian, before we do that, um I would rather uh handle the legal issue in um executive session before we get into this, uh you know, the dicey area right now. I'm I'm hesitant, I'm I I I understand what people are saying, I I um, uh there are certain things I agree with, but I know that there's some legal issues at stake that we do need to address before we just create a a moratorium on this.
That was pretty clear what council just explained. Council just explained the process. I think everyone here understands the process.
Oh, I understand the process, I mentioned the process at the June fifth meeting. It's not the process that I'm that I'm addressing, it's the, it's a legal issue uh with fusion that I'm addressing.
So what legal, what legal issues? We have privy to that information?
No, no, uh that's, it's a legal issue, which is something that has to be dealt with in executive session.
Excuse me, what what's the legal issue? What's the issue that has to be dealt with in executive, we have an attorney right here, what's the legal issue? A legal issue would be if there's a dispute on a contract with the with the a union or an issue uh with an employee or something, but I don't see what legal issue.
Well, let's let, let let's be honest here. People have mentioned fusion, people have mentioned the uh uh the possibility of a moratorium, and people have mentioned what legal, legal rights does the village have and possibly what legal rights does fusion have? And those are issues that should, those are issues that should be discussed in executive session as opposed to in a public forum at an open meeting to determine whether or not, to Seth's point, a a, so the board can discuss whether or not they feel a moratorium is appropriate in the context of what's going on with fusion.
Uh Steve, if we if we uh now uh vote to schedule uh July seventeenth a public hearing to discuss the moratorium, um we could do that in addition to discussing these issues in in executive session for legal reasons, can't we?
Yes, you're kind.
Although the problem with doing that is, don't we have to have the language for said moratorium uh before we set the public hearing for that?
That would be appropriate.
Steve, is that correct?
If the, if the village, uh if the board is interested in uh discussing the possibility of a moratorium and would like to tentatively set a public hearing for that moratorium uh for the the next board meeting, which would be, what, I believe, the seventeenth, July seventeenth? Then what you could do is, uh the the language would be uh the ability of the board and the village to study um the uh to to study whether or not a local law, a moratorium, moratorium establishing a local law uh which would define the parameters by which a uh dispensary, uh a methadone dispensary or clinic uh would be able to cite within the Village of Manans.
Don't you have to introduce a local law tonight for the moratorium with some sort of language in order to have a public hearing? You've gotta introduce it as a board first.
Right. Correct.
Steve?
Yep, what what, what what would you like for me? This apparently, and and Seth is raising an issue, um maybe, and I don't know, and I'm not asking for an answer to this question, as to whether or not Seth is, you know, uh and and other board members are interested in whether or not a moratorium, a public hearing should be set. I I I think that the language that I just gave you um to establish a public hearing to discuss whether or not a a the the parameters of a uh of a local law regarding uh the the citing of a methadone clinic in the Village of uh Banans, I think that is sufficient. But it's entirely up to the board as to whether or not they want to pursue that.
So to both Steve uh and John's point, I would feel more comfortable if we put together that that specific language and we drafted it as a local law and introduced it first. So, you know, I don't, I don't oppose the language that uh Steve uh that Steve made, but I think we have to draft that as a local law before we we do that. So I think we, I don't want to put the cart a cart before the horse on that and then have this be something that is challenged, which is why I brought that up on on June fifth as well.
So we can put something together for introduction at uh at the next meeting, but then the public hearing would be the following uh board meeting. Or you could al- always call a special board meeting, but there are certain notice requirements under the open meetings law that have to be uh that have to be complied with.
Well, Seth, if if we discuss and 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 come to a conclusion about uh about a moratorium, uh can we come out of executive session and then vote to schedule that?
I believe so, we continue with the meeting uh after executive session, we can pass motions at that rate, so um that's fine.
Seven days notice, we have to get seven, seven days notice for a special meeting.
We have plenty of time before the seventeenth.
Yes, we can do it for the.
No, 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 no.
To schedule a second meeting after the seventeenth.
Fusion has a lot of time.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm saying.
No, because it's a public hearing, does it have to happen at a board meeting, or can we call a special meeting? That's what I'm saying.
Let's do that, or seven days after instead.
Yeah, you can, you can call for a special meeting as long as you meet the notice requirements under the public open, on under the open meetings law.
Yeah, I can tell you that Monday, there's a board meeting, so it'll be a conference on the Monday, so if we could do this, sir.
So it'd be.
And to answer Brian's question, uh the mayor's question, the answer is yes. With respect to tonight, after executive session, the board always comes back into open session, and at at that point in time, the board can um can take whatever action it wants in open session.
The tenth is open, Tuesday, their DA night, so this room is not available, and it's got captured in the park start. Wednesday is the boot truck festival starts then, the twelve.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm open.
You can't do it, you can't do it Monday, the tenth. You don't have, this isn't, you don't have enough notice. Because it's not gonna go, it's it's not gonna go, and earliest it would go in the paper would be Wednesday. So you would count, you would count from Wednesday, the uh the fifth.
Can we wait till after executive session? Can we wait till after executive session? I think there's, there's still this lingering legal issue that I'm, I'm uncomfortable with before we, we do that.
Sure, we'll wait. When do we wait for you to go back into open session? For after your executive session?
Where was all this thought a month ago when they were asking for the moratorium?
We're here now.
I know.
We're just like, we started this village.
So can we adjourn for example, second and go back or?
Steve, what is your suggestion?
Yeah.
That's entirely up to the board, how they want to handle that. I don't know, I don't know if you have any other business for tonight outside of this, but.
Uh, wait, we have to, uh, yes, we have to award the contract for the high reservoir service. All right. So why don't we finish off the regular business and then?
Can I make one quick point? I just, I just want to make sure that whatever angle you take, whether it's moratorium or local law, whatever is the quickest.
Moratorium is a local law.
Okay. Well, I, I, I understand, but is that the best local law approach to circumvent? See, Fusion's going to try to fast track this. So what we need to do is fast track it as well. So my suggestion would be to come up with whatever the best solution is to fast track it, to try to get ahead of Fusion. So whatever the mechanics of that are, that would be my preference that you would look at that angle.
So we'll, we'll discuss it in executive session. We'll, uh, where are we going to, where are we going to, anyone who wants to attend afterwards in open sessions, we'll just reopen the doors and, and discuss what we've
People could always wait in the lobby area and then, uh, one of the board members could alert them when we go back into open session.
Uh, Don, do you have the information on the high reservoir service?
Does everyone remembers this has been going on for some time? There were bids opened on, uh, the 20th, uh, the 21st of June, uh, the base bid was $270,990 and was won by PCC Construction, who had bid on the project previously, uh, and was the only bidder, and that's why we sent it out with, uh, some, uh, asks for divvying up the, the amount of work into sections. This is the base bid, which basically repairs the entire high reservoir service, uh, water storage box. Um, and so does anyone want to make a motion to accept the bid as submitted?
Second?
Who's in favor? We've been waiting for literally years on this, so this is very important to get accomplished. All right. Don, do you have anything else?
I have anything else.
Um, we need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion for executive session.
Second? Aye.
We'll be downstairs maybe, but that's probably the best place. Yeah. And then we'll come back.